Seven PM, and we're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is the meeting of December 21st, 2017. And just a reminder to silence your mobile devices. And we will start first with a public comment. Anybody? No? No public comment? We will move right to Ms. Joe Carroll with the student report.
Hey, guys. I'm just gonna start, talk about some sports. Winter sports are now well underway. On the 13th, swimming, won against Haverhill. Wrestling, won against Andover. Girls' basketball, lost in overtime to Bishop Fenwick. And boys' hockey, won against Boston Latin. The 16th, girls' hockey, won against Acton Boxborough. The 17th, girls' basketball beat Cambridge. Boys' hockey tied with Tewksbury. The 19th, freshman girls' basketball, won against Methuen. Yesterday, JV girls and varsity girls' basketball both beat Methuen. Boys' basketball won by one point against Methuen. Yeah. Boys' swim, lost their meet. Girls' hockey won their game. Girls' and boys' track both won against Chelmsford in their meet. Today, freshman girls, in fact, less than an hour ago, won against Belrika in basketball. And there's JV and varsity girls' basketball games going on now. And then tomorrow, there's gymnastics competition in Lowell, and a basketball game, boys' basketball game at Belrika. Other news, the alumni lunch was today, which is the first year we got juniors involved in the alumni lunch. I thought that went really well overall. Juniors asked a lot of questions, got really involved, so that was really positive.
That's great.
And hoping to continue that with the juniors next year. Student council donated 117 gifts this year, which I think is their highest number yet, to Operation Donation. And they're gonna distribute candy grams throughout the school tomorrow. Follow-up on the lunch policy, we talked about last meeting. Upon talking to a lot of this, me personally, a lot of the same people I talked to before, and discussing the revision to it, most people were very positive towards that, that leaving that $5 cap was a good thing overall, just for everyone's sake, so.
That's great.
It's been a good thing.
We really appreciated that you did that and gave us feedback. That was very helpful.
Of course. And everyone's pretty much just getting ready for break. One more day.
Not just the students.
I think everybody.
That's excellent.
We'll have a good break.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you very much, Liam.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, I believe we have two sets of minutes to review. One is very brief. And then to approve, I should say.
So I will move that we approve the minutes as presented in the packet for December 4th, 2017.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Witzke Lynch. Those in favor?
Aye.
For, Mr. Trissey, as you can see, is not here tonight. And the second set from December 7th, which was our last meeting.
So I will move that we approve the minutes from December 7th, 2017, as presented in the packet. I think actually...
People say December 4th.
Oh, they do? I didn't even see that.
The second one says December 4th.
So we'll change that till December 7th.
So that should be changed.
But that is the seventh meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause I clicked on it.
'Cause the fourth was Gilligan Day.
Yes. Every day is Gilligan.
Don't start that.
Yeah, no. So with that correction, do we have a... I didn't hear a second.
A second.
Okay. All right. Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Witzke Lynch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Thank you. Very good. All right. So next, we have my update, my report, which is excellent news. Did you wanna say anything, Mr. Mealy? Or do you want me just to let people know that?
Regarding the unions' changes.
Yeah.
Contract, yes, it's consistent with the other contracts, especially with regards to the annual increases. So they'll see increases of 2% for this year, 2 and 1/4% for the following year, and 2% the year after that, which is consistent with what we've been doing with the other unions. And then the other items, that was the main negotiating item. The others were like turning their half-day holidays into full holidays, and not having to report on snow day, which given one, that was a good idea. So those are the main conditions that were negotiated.
That's right. And they approved that, and we voted that 5-0 in our executive session in the last meeting. So very happy to have that settled. Thank you for all the committee who worked on that as well.
And thank you, Amy, for serving on that committee.
It was very easy. I have to say that the rest of the group did a lot. But appreciate that. Everyone put in a lot of work on that, so thank you. Couple other things. We've enjoyed some festivities this month. We've had the Sleckman's Breakfast that we were invited to, which was very nice. Got to interact with municipal side colleagues, et cetera. As well as Dr. Price hosted an event yesterday as well, which was very nice. I had the privilege of attending the Scarlet Night Academy. Pat McGravy teaches a civics course at Scarlet Night Academy, and he invited Diana DeZoglio to come in and talk about being a state representative, what that involves, what that entails, as part of their course. And I was able to participate and listen in part of that. And it was really great, and the students had a lot of great comments and questions. Diana was excellent with them, and took some comments from them that she's researching now. And it was a great thing to participate in. I really liked being in that packed room on a Wednesday night at, I think, 6 o'clock. So it was great. They were all there, and Mr. Jackson was there as well. So it was great. I was happy to see that. And we, you might talk about this, we had a PTO president's meeting this morning, and looking at some new ways to support new endeavors in the district going forward, so. Very good. Those are my updates.
Not many for me, except I'd like to ask Dr. Straight to stand up and model the winning ugly sweater from the ECC. Ms. Caitlin Lundie, that was the winner. It was hard to decide. That was the winner. So thank you very much. It was a fun day over at the ECC. Just a quick update on the middle school search. We've appointed the committee. We're ready to go on January 4th. We'll be meeting to review resumes. And we have posted the assistant superintendent position that is now vacant as a result of Dr. Gilligan... But soon-to-be Dr. Gilligan becoming the superintendent.
We hope.
And we will be sending a letter out in my January newsletter, and then a letter right after break to the faculty and staff to start putting that committee together. So both have been posted, and both have been launched. Obviously, the assistant superintendent will be a few weeks later than the middle school. We wanted to make sure we coordinated that, so they weren't at the exact same time.
When does the middle school principal application deadline?
The Tuesday after break. So we gave folks...
So the second?
The second.
Okay.
And we meet together. Actually, I think it's on the 4th, and we meet on the 4th.
Okay.
So we gave a few people a few days after break, and then I think the assistant superintendent's on the 26th or something.
Yeah, I was thinking it was the end of the month, too.
But we wanted to give people time over the holiday break if they wanted to to apply, so, for both positions. So we gave a month or so for each position posted. And we've been tweeting them out, and really trying to let folks know that they're available.
Great.
And just happy holidays to the faculty and staff. As Liam said, I think we're all ready for a break. So. And the other thing I would say is, you know, if you remember last year, the school committee voted a half-day tomorrow. I have heard nothing but faculty and staff saying, "Thank you for that." And especially now that there's a snowstorm coming. It's really wonderful that we're not gonna have any stress at the end of the day. So thank you all.
I also heard from students that they're also happy that there is at least a half-day, so that they didn't have everything due this morning. There's time to turn things in tomorrow. Not a full day, but still one more night.
Yeah. It was a really good change, and again, I've just heard so many people appreciated that. I've seen nods.
Great. Good. So, yeah, Mr. Trissey is not here. The school building committee update?
I have a quick one.
Okay.
I just got a text from him. So as you guys know, we, the school building committee voted to award the contract to the Triumph Construction Company. Triumph has signed the contract. It is now being sent here. I anticipate it'll be signed tomorrow.
Okay.
So we are there, and we are starting to coordinate. And as of, you know, right after the holiday break, we will be starting to build in Pennsylvania. So there we go.
Were there any changes that were made from the original presentation?
So the, well, we've had a number of presentations. So the most recent was, there were two adults. One was the gym being slightly larger, and one was a art space. Neither of those were included on the final.
Okay. And are we comfortable with that?
Yeah, so the gym, as it stands, is 2,200 square feet. Just as I look at Mr. Clark, it's bigger than the Franklin Gymnasium, and slightly smaller than the Franklin Cafeteria. So the Franklin CAF is 2,500 square feet, and the gym is 1783, I think. So it's in between those two, and for a playroom space, we're comfortable with that.
Okay.
And the art space, the good thing about that adult is it's seriously just a modular we could put in at any point. And for next year, at this point, we're only planning, as you'll see in my budget presentation, to staff 15 of the classrooms. So we will actually have a 16th classroom that can serve as an art space.
Art room.
That's good.
And then one of the things that I remember, and I don't remember exactly the square footage, but there was a square footage guideline for kindergarten, which I think was like 1,052 square feet, or something like that. And we only had a couple of classrooms that currently met that. And I think one was actually, I think, the basement garden level at Kittredge, and then maybe one somewhere else, so.
So the guidelines were for the MSBA, if we got MSBA funding. So, and we actually are having the classrooms come in at 950 square feet, which is bigger than almost any classroom that we have in the district, and we're comfortable with that space. It is not as big as the MSBA would require us.
But we're not using their funding.
But we're not using their funding.
Okay.
So, and remember, each classroom, as a big decision we made was that each classroom has its own bathroom, which for kindergarteners is great.
Isn't that required?
Yeah. Recommended. Again, because we're not using MSBA, we're not required to do a lot of these things, but we did take their guidelines. So I'm happy to, the final draft of, the final version that we put out to bid is on the website, if anyone wants to look on that, on the ECC expansion. So we have 16 classrooms. We have a library and music space. We have the playroom slash cafeteria. We have a teacher space. And then in the current ECC, we've expanded the nurses' office. We've built a better, larger administrative office. We have a conference room, and we have a counselor's space.
Will this, I'm trying to remember from the plans. Will there be one entrance into the entire complex?
Yes, one entrance that you come in. To the right will be the ECC. To the left will be the 15 kindergarten.
Okay. I don't remember from the plans if it was two separate entrances.
Nope, one entrance.
And then there was a connection behind it, or something.
Yeah, you can come in. We have other doors that we'll be able to use to offload buses, but there will be one secure entrance once the day begins.
For visitors.
All right. Correct.
And it's right by the office. So one of the things that we did change as we went through the process was a much better sightline from the office to where folks come in.
Okay. And I assume that's been reviewed with NAPD and...
We have had a number of meetings with a coordination committee. Police, fire, conservation.
Okay.
So the plans are on the website, if anyone out there wants to look at them.
Any other questions? Thank you for that update.
No problem.
So we can move on to the school committee meeting dates. We had a discussion last meeting, and juggled around a few things. I know we've since added the, a couple of the other questions we'd asked about, which were the awards night, scholarship night, town meeting, et cetera, are all on here. Any new developments?
We should add the new town meeting on January 30th.
Right.
Right, that's right. So Tuesday, as usual. Okay. Any other new developments? We were gonna leave the April 5th in place, and if there's something tragic that we need to redress for, then we will.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you'll be in good hands without me.
I think that we can work it out.
Be like a trial run.
Yeah.
Quite a few sentences.
Yes, so I think it'll be fine. We do have enough people to approve that. I did check in with Mr. Trissey, and he had no changes to what we had from last time, so he's okay with this. I'm assuming he's all right with January 30th. I forgot to ask about that, so thank you. So I entertain a motion to approve these dates through the end of the year for our meetings.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Witzke Lynch, second by Mr. McDevitt. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. And then next, we have the meal charge policy. I was really happy to hear Liam reference that, that he had checked back with students. That's really great. Any new comments from anyone? I don't care where you weren't coming back with any additional information, I don't think.
No, just that.
I thought it was also great the fact that Ms. Murphy said that they have the, when students, people have the money left in their accounts, and they ask them if they wanna donate it, that builds a slush fund to cover for some kids as well, which I thought was great to point out, so.
I really appreciate Jessica Kilarde, I think, in the high school policy. I think what she outlined they did was a little bit different from what was here. And so I think that that better reflects it. I did actually communicate a little bit with Liam, and maybe he doesn't get the emails, but you can set your own, as a parent, your low-balance reminder, I think is what it's called, or something like that. So, you know, for example, mine is, you know, $10 or something. And so when you get that, you get an actual notice for that as well. And I think that that's a great feature, that the Send Money to School website, or whatever it's called, the point-of-service account has for parents as well. So I don't know if the students necessarily see those, but whoever is...
Populating them.
Whoever is slush-funding that is getting notice. So I like it.
That's great. Any other comments or questions? So...
So I will move to approve the school meal charge policy as presented in the packet.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Witzke Lynch. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As well. Very nice. Very good. Budget status report? That's another packet here from...
Consistent, not many changes. We're still a little bit, less than a 1% decrease from last year's spending rate, which is good. We're tracking with Donna in the Special Education Department, the out-of-district, and they continue to be down from what they had been and what we had anticipated with some of the activity that they've been doing, and being successful in bringing students back to district. So that's been the biggest impact. That certainly has helped us offset the circuit breaker loss that we had, when the percentage was less than they had anticipated. So those are the big factors, but it's pretty much tracking as it has been for the year.
No areas that you feel concerned about at all?
No, we do, we are tracking the utilities closely, because we had not seen, based on the rate changes that had occurred, the savings in electricity we had anticipated. But we have seen the gas prices offset by a decrease in the rates that took effect this month, just in time for heating season. So that should release the pressure there. And we have been participating with the town in a solar effort from 1,600 that is lowering our costs for the year as well. So should take care of it. But we'll continue to monitor and make sure that those credits that we're getting are helping as we thought they would.
And last year, we were also concerned about out-of-district transportation.
Right.
And not only have we been able to see a decrease in out-of-district tuitions, but we have also seen a decrease in out-of-district transportation. Two ways of that, fewer kids going out of district, but also really being thoughtful if two kids are going to the same school to make sure they're on the same bus. We've actually been working collaboratively with other towns. If they're sending kids to an out-of-district, we're sharing a bus. So really trying to bring those costs down. Lucy McCarthy's been doing an excellent job with Sandy O'Connor, our new out-of-district coordinator, really looking at transportation. So that was a concern last year. I think we have really put our eyes on that and seen some changes.
Yeah, and while we're talking about transportation, we got the bids back. I think I had indicated that we were going out to bid for our transportation contract, and anticipated a pretty sizable increase. But it was pleasantly surprising, since we only got one, our current contractor, that the increases were a little bit less than we thought they might be. So that was, that was very helpful. They're within what you'd expect. And we still, looking at, just coincidentally, we had a listserv go out, people asking how much they're paying for the buses. And we're still below the average for the cost of buses. So it was good.
That is good.
So when we enter into that, is that a two-year or three-year agreement?
It's a three-year agreement with two one-year options that are our options.
Okay. I remember there being something funny about that, and I couldn't remember what the options were.
Right. You can do a three-year, and as much as a two-year, one-year options.
Right.
The best thing to do is have them put the bid in, and it's at our discretion. So if it makes sense, we just renew for the next year or two, and then rebid, or you could rebid after three.
How come the telephone expenses are widely variable from school to school?
Yeah, telephone's tough to track, just because Mike's done a lot with the telephone. And so what we'll find at the end of the year is that it might cost us pennies for one school, because those lines are covered under the contract, and the bulk of it's occurring at, say, the high school or central office, is where the main billing is coming from.
Okay.
Telephone's funny like that. Yep. But they really, about a year or two ago, eliminated a lot of lines that we were paying for and just didn't need. Yep.
That's good. Thank you. We can move on then to Ms. Picard and the kindergarten complex naming.
So I think the most important thing for people to know is that we're gonna be accepting written suggestions for naming the school. So we'll wanna have those suggestions, as well as an explanation as to why somebody would suggest a particular name. And so we'll be sending out a notice tomorrow, inviting people to do that, and they'll have an email address that they can send that to. And they will be due by the 16th of January. So that gives them a couple weeks into the new year to talk to friends and neighbors and think about what they wanna suggest. And then we'll have a subcommittee that will organize those, review those. We'll give you a status update in February, and have a recommendation for March 1st. That's the plan.
Sounds like a thorough plan.
So probably a year and a half, two years ago, when we were going through the track process, Mrs. Zegary was able to pull how we went through the naming process, for example, for the Sargent School, and all of the letters of submission for that. So I'm just curious if you would kind of bring those back up again just to see if any of the names happen to be the same. So for example...
Oh, okay. That's good. Yeah, I reviewed the stuff from the track naming, and of course, the policy updates. So the announcement we send out will reference the policy updates. But I didn't look at the Sargent stuff, but I can certainly look back at that.
There were just some really interesting reasons. Now, I'm not necessarily sure that they were trying to, because, trying to pick a name based on that location, for example, but the importance that the individual had in the town. And I think that somebody might forget some of those facts that are there. And so it might strengthen an application just to know or understand that, you know, perhaps somebody was, you know, a major landowner in town, or something of that nature.
Great. Thank you.
A wealth of ideas already out there, that's good to know.
Thank you, Ms. Picard, for handling all that. So new business. We have some guests.
Yes, we do. I'd like to invite up our team from high school, and as well as the Franklin. So if you guys wanna come up and split some microphones. But before we do that, I'm gonna actually take you through and talk a little bit about it, because... Do you guys wanna introduce yourselves to the folks at home?
Good idea.
Chad Jackson, high school principal.
Joe Clark, Franklin Elementary principal.
Martha Wolfman, grade four teacher at Franklin.
Carrie Cafrey-Zwingy, English coordinator at the high school.
You know, Dr. Price has been talking a lot about this, leading the nation website. And I think one of the things we do here in North Annova is probably one of the best in all of Massachusetts, and maybe even New England, is instructional rounds. We've been doing them now for six years. And it's progressed to the point where we've even opened it up. And now we have teachers participating on a regular basis. And our rounds are based upon, adapted from the Harvard instructional rounds, and there's four key components. One is the principals, and they're gonna talk about it. So I'm not gonna steal all their thunder, but they're gonna talk...
I'm just gonna take my whole intro.
Short and sweet here, Joe. They identify an issue of practice. And so they present to the group, and they talk about the practice. It's typically an issue that focuses on the instructional core. It's directly observable, and it's actionable in real time within the school. The second piece is, in groups, is they do a tremendous job, and I'll let them explain. But they usually send out two groups to at least see the same grade level, so that we're seeing the same thing and get different perspectives. So they go out and observe. It's descriptive, and it's not evaluative. It's specific to instruction typically, and it's related to the issue that they're looking for. And the biggest key, and the hardest thing for new people that participate, is to be nonjudgmental. You just wanna record as someone who's visiting what you see. Then the third piece is, we get back together, and the groups meet, they organize, they group themes. Eventually, they report out. And then we get to what's called the next level of work, where we're looking at, you know, what might the next steps be at their schools. And since it's nonjudgmental, we typically like to share this information, whether it's on the stickies, or it's transcribed, or on the posters of reporting out with the teachers themselves. So it's really transparent, and it's really excellent. And these guys have participated quite a bit, And these guys have participated quite a bit and it's been awesome this year because every year it progresses a little more. And I think the key component of having teachers is part of this now. Really makes it special here in North Andover. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Jackson or Mr. Clark, whoever planned on going first.
Thank you. Good night. So yeah, everything that, you know, Mr. Gilligan just said is absolutely true. It's such a fantastic experience. For me, coming in four years ago as a first-year principal, it was something I had never experienced before. And the power of not only being able to think about it from my own school, but we go to every school over the course of the year, October to May, we hit one school every month. And as an elementary principal, it's so interesting to see how the other schools are operating and seeing teachers and that, but then also being able to see where our kids are going from there and thinking about a North Andover education really being a North Andover education all the way through, pre-K to 12, because we do include the ECC as well, which is nice. And but, so thinking about, you know, Franklin, over the course of the four years I've been here, we've done a few different issues of practice. And this year, we had a unique opportunity, I thought, where we are starting this eureka math. And I had never done this before, but I wanted everybody to look at the same thing. Normally, it was just kind of a broad picture, but this year I really wanted to hone in and get the district leadership's team, team's view on how are we, how are we teaching math? How are we doing? We're a few months in. Ours was in just a few weeks ago. And we're a few months into this program now. How are we doing? What are you seeing that's really working in the classrooms? Where are areas that we could improve upon? Because that's what these instructional, instructional rounds are about, is how can we impact teaching and learning on a daily basis? And when we get to the next level of work, it really pushes our own thinking. So I had asked all of my teachers that day to rearrange their schedules, which if, you know, in elementary school, they're very strict of their schedules. They have ELA at this time and math at this time and we're creatures of habit. We have assigned, unassigned, assigned parking spots in the, in the parking lot. So to do that was incredibly helpful for all of us and, you know, I showered them with appreciation over switching their schedules around. And the good thing about it is everyone did it because they know the importance of it. They understand the importance of these instructional rounds. And there was part of me going into it that I said, I bet these are the things that we're going to talk about. And a few of them, absolutely. When we got to that debrief session at the end, we were, I was checking, yep, yep, yep. But then it was the way we expanded even further. And I remember one of the most powerful things that I heard came from a fifth-grade teacher at Atkinson who said, yeah, I've got one more thing to say. And, you know, when we started these six years ago, back in 2012, we had this one lens or this one group looking at it. And we tweaked it a little bit each year, but I really do think the best tweak we had was this year when we came in in 2017, whatever year we're in now. And we said, hey, we're going to include lead teachers, facilitators of collaborative inquiry, department heads, academic coordinators. And we brought all these people in and just the wealth of knowledge in that room expanded exponentially and now we're getting so much more out of it. Well, I mean, we were good. We were rocking and rolling with these for the past five, six years. We really, we really hit a stride. And we said, how can we push ourselves even farther? And we started talking about, okay, how are we using this collaboration time? And boom, why don't we open our practice a little bit? And that's kind of how this all came about. But the impact for me, each time they come to, this group comes to the Franklin School, I learned something new about my school. I learned something new about the teachers there. I learned something new about myself and my leadership style as I'm listening to other people really talk about what they're seeing in my building. Because it's like your own kids. You know, you get a little nervous when, when everybody's coming like, oh, no, I hope everybody does okay and I hope nobody's nervous. And there's a little bit of, you know, a little bit of a guard up like, oh, man, I hope everything goes well. But it's so great when you get that feedback because it's nonjudgmental. And it's so hard, and I'm sure, I don't know if people are gonna, if you guys have mentioned that, but it's hard when you're explaining the process to your teachers. It's nonjudgmental. Yeah, right, Joe. Yeah, they're not coming in. Come on. But it, but it's really not. And to hear the feedback in constructive ways on, this is how we can help you. This is how we think your school can advance. It was very powerful. Now, we just had ours a few weeks ago and my plan is we have a full-day PD on January 12th. So we're going to talk through the sticky charts that you can see on the picture up there. We're going to talk through the next level of work and we're going to talk about what that means for Franklin. Every school does it a little bit differently. I'm excited to do it this year, especially now that I have teachers that are going to be up there with me talking because it adds credibility to us when we say it's nonjudgmental, when they can back us up and say, no, really, it is. So that's kind of, that's kind of my feeling. It was, it was such an incredible experience four years ago and each year it's gotten a little better. But I have to say, this year, including all these people, has made a big difference. So I'm very happy. And I'm not just saying that because two of them are sitting next to me now. So that's where we were with Franklin. I know Mr. Jackson's was November? Is that when we saw you? Yeah. November 6th is right before our full professional day, on the 8th, I believe. Yeah, so I think for, for me, being at the district for 10, 11, 11 years now and seeing this process kind of progress and manifest, it's been very powerful. I think to echo some of Joe's passion there as well, I think being a first-year principal, you do get nervous. You want, you want your school to thrive. You want people to give, validate a lot of the work you're doing and get some positive feedback. But you're also looking for, even though it's a snapshot of time, you're really counting on the group to kind of push your thinking. And I think that's one of the things that we do extremely well here. I made a note as I was going through and I shared some notes with Joe today to come up with a wide lens because anticipating Greg kind of going through everything, do I have a little more material here? Do?
I cut it down quite a bit.
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. But, you know, I think from the principal level, we share our practice and really count on each other. I know when we do the setups for these walkthroughs, scripting sheets, almost the thing, the piece of paper you put on a clipboard that allows for three pages, front and back, to do, we build off each other and improve that for whoever's coming to observe as well. And I think we've gotten very good at that and we all say we borrowed it or stole it from the previous one, but we've been doing this for five years, even though I was assistant principal. So I think one of the great things about the process is we model the practice that we expect our teachers to do. And this is something that the teachers do on their professional days and during the collaboration first. I know Dr. Price and Mr. Gilligan talk about looking at student work and presenting your practice. And there's no more powerful thing you can do than know you have to go up as a school and present your school's work to everyone else. And teachers do that at the assessment level. They do that with their student work level. It's something that we can show it's important to us as we model and grow as lifelong learners. So as, even before getting into high school, I think it's a very important thing to know. We all know we have to do it and we all do look forward to doing it, but there is a little bit of anxiety there when you go over before because you don't want there to be poor things and they get feedback. Even though it is nonjudgmental, people want to shine and we want to make our, our leaders shine and we want to make our school shine. So it's important as well. I think at the high school, just to cover, I talked about this a couple of weeks ago when I was here for the MCAS presentation, we're doing a peer observation focus this year. And one of the ways we tried to connect at the high school going early in the process was to really focus on student engagement and it was an element area that we talked about in our professional days in the summer where teachers kind of went through and took different elements of the teacher rubric on teaching, teaching and learning. And we had the most picked student engagement. So the cool part about it from the leadership end is I was able to use the teacher statements to help the scripting sheets for what student engagement looks like. They came up with things in the professional day for increased student voice, how are students given an opportunity to use discourse in class? Do you see activities with a variety of delivery styles that provide multiple opportunities to demonstrate learning? Does the learning environment provide for regular reflection, questioning and peer interaction? Are students thinking critically by themselves with the teacher acting as a facilitator? Does the technology, we have all this wonderful technology here, does it support engagement? You know, we have our special ed-supported classes so we can check to see, are there frequent check-ins? Are there peer models working throughout a classroom? Is there parallel teaching going on? So we were able to set this up for the, all the observers that come in, the teachers, the FCIs, the other administrators, to really give their notes and their sticky notes. Thank Dr. Price for taking those pictures off my wall and her visit there that are on the website as well. But those notes came from those observations that, you know, we hopefully set up to guide the focus. So it's a very important thing that the teachers... Yeah, you can always come by. They're still in my office if you ever want to come by. Yeah, you know, but we complete the walkthroughs and, you know, Mr. Gilligan guided through the, the process. And I think for us as leaders and, you know, Joe and I as principals, you know, we do our best to jot down and identify themes. We had 11 groups go to the high school and see 33 different classes. This year, we spread out and saw all different disciplines. So as we're going through, we're craving to see what themes emerge even through the structure for student engagement. You know, so from our report, I'll share with you just some things we jotted down. We had some positive feedback on the level of student engagement in our classrooms. There are several comments on specific areas of observed student engagement, multiple modes of learning opportunities for students, a variety of classroom setups that encourage student discours, teacher moves that make for safe formative assessment, teachers acting as facilitators to allow students to lead learning and several opportunities for students to think critically. It wasn't all perfect through there. We got to the next level of work and we're challenged by the group, but it's nice. One of the things we do the day after is we send an email. I know we talk about kind of how do you kind of first communicate with the class, with your, your class. It's my class as a, as a principal, but your teachers, because just like the students are, they're itching to know how it went. You know, so it's important to send that communication at the end of the day and you want to include some of the themes that emerge. So one of the last things where I do after that day is get down to my office and try and condense that to send a positive thing back out to the staff because they work so hard to prepare for those days. They know, they know it's coming and they're looking forward to the feedback as well. And then we let the staff know as a leadership team, we're going to reflect on that process later on in the week. We need a couple of days to kind of process and go through from that lens of it. We went back later on in the week at the high school and did a chalk talk protocol where we're kind of silent with a guiding question and we can write on our sticky paper. We use the guiding question, how can you use the results of the district walkthroughs to enhance teaching and learning around student engagement? You know, a few suggestions that came out of that with our teacher leaders, Mrs. Cafrey-Zwingy there as well, was the planned future learning walks at the high school where we could have some nonevaluative stuff with our teachers kind of going through. Celebrate the comments and the feedback that we got. The big school, some of the hard things we have, have a tough time doing is celebrating the teacher work and the positive things that go on as a whole group, as a mixed group and in departments. So we want to make sure that theme emerged throughout the year and building and driving that culture and that focus on student engagement and instruction. And also share mini lessons. One of the things that came out, I think, from teacher feedback as I go back and it was good talk with our department coordinators where we have a lot of things going on, RBT, foundations of teaching courses, teachers doing professional development. It'd be great to have an opportunity to share in mixed group, many lessons that people, that may be new to them, whether it's coming from newer teachers or more veteran teachers. How do we share that best practice and really get it to resonate throughout a building? So we're going to plan maybe an hour later on the year to do that. One of the things that was very pleasantly surprised is I had a lot of staff come down to view the sticky notes in my office.
That's good.
Throughout, I gave some time during, I think, the full day. We, it was lucky we had it a couple of days after. I said, hey, if you come, come on down. I may not be in my office. The door's open. Come on in. So I was able to interact with some staff as they came down and they're in there taking notes off of a sticky where their group was. I was like, I have your group. Here's where it is. You know, so they got, I get a little bit and share some insight one-on-one or a couple as they came down, which I think is important as well. And just to echo, the instructional rounds as a host school, you get concrete feedback. Those stickies are, those are actual phrases and actual feedback from actual people. But you're also able to get some, you know, feedback areas to help you improve as well. But the validation is important for teachers. They, they do like to know that. They're kind of on the right direction if you have a theme or focus as a leader. I think it allows me as a principal to observe my leaders. I have a new leadership team at the high school. We have enhanced department coordinators. You know, it's very important that, you know, Dr. Price, Mr. Gilligan, Mr. Mealy, Dr. Straight, you know, see that they're able to reflect, take feedback from other people. Sometimes it's hard to take some feedback from other people. And they're also able to give some critical feedback or some important feedback or, you know, their lens where their background is from. So it's allowed me to kind of sit back and do that. And the process also allows for the department coordinators and teachers to give feedback and add an important lens to the exercise. It opens up our practice as a school. The kids see it. The kids see everyone coming in. They see it when we do it and go and walk through in our own classroom that are evaluative. And I think it's important that they understand, I'm going out and going to go into society and I'm going to need to grow and learn and continuously learn. So, you know, from my end of it, I've talked about probably 10 different things that this one time a year hosts can do, let alone you go to another school. And you take pride and want to give them valuable feedback when you go to the Franklin from your different perspective. So I'll let Carrie share her perspective as a teacher and as department coordinator. It's her first year in our new enhanced role where the department coordinators have returned to observe classrooms in a slightly evaluative way. And she can discuss the impact of instructional rounds and the observation from her perspective.
Yeah, I just want to speak too that I think the enhanced role of the department coordinators has allowed North Andover High School to more effectively work to enhance student engagement and student learning, not only just because we can participate in these district walkthroughs, but now as department coordinators, we are responsible for consistent walkthroughs, evaluative walkthroughs in our departments. And I think really being consistently present in classrooms is allowing us to, to really design collaboration informed by observations. And this is making collaboration more valuable to teachers. And that's, it's a really, really important and valuable change. I, to kind of echo some of what Chet said, being involved in the district walkthroughs and the evaluative walkthroughs allows us to witness, really and celebrate, the successes that are happening in these classrooms. And that's really enhanced the culture at North Andover High School. And it's really created a situation where people are comfortable opening up their practice. And because of that, in addition to the professional practice goal, the English department is, as part of their SMART goal, every English teacher has committed to conducting one peer observation this school year within the English department. And we're sharing those, we're sharing the observation during collaboration using the success analysis protocol, which is allowing us as a department to hear these successes and really evaluate the conditions that lead to these successes and then implement those conditions in our classroom. So after we hear the observation and really like analyze it, we're able to say, okay, that's something that I can implement in my classroom. So teachers, again, are leaving collaboration with ideas and strategies that they can immediately implement into their classroom. And it's really exciting and create, I think, a positive feel around collaboration. And I think it's really just important to note that the district walkthroughs and the enhanced department coordinate position are really helping to ensure that there's alignment in curriculum K through 12. And during these district walkthroughs, we're identifying like best practice. And I can observe that at the Franklin and implement those strategies in the high school and I think vice versa. And also with this enhanced department coordinator position, there's time. There's time for us to meet weekly as a leadership team. There's time for us to meet in small groups. Department coordinators are meeting in small groups weekly with assistant principals. We're having the opportunity now to meet weekly with Mr. Gilligan in the assistant superintendent position. And then I'm also able to now meet with Lorene. It was like, and that's really important to be able to meet with the curriculum coordinators K through 12 monthly is not an opportunity that we've had in the past. So I think this is a really valuable change for student engagement.
Ms. Wolfen did.
I've just been thrilled to be allowed to be part of these district walkthroughs. For me, it was kind of like a peek behind the curtain kind of thing to see what really goes on. And I even had said to Joe initially, the first walkthrough was middle school and the second one was the high school. And I'm like, what would I as an elementary teacher be able to offer at a high school walkthrough? You know, I'm in the fourth grade. What they're doing in honors English in grade 12, I'm not really sure. But the way that Dr. Price set us all up and, you know, explained the procedure and the just evidentiary details, that's all you come back with, what did you observe? I realized that K through 12, we're all doing the same thing. We are all trying to facilitate our students' learning. And basically, the craft doesn't change whether you're in kindergarten, preschool or honors, you know, English. And then on a more selfish note, I was lucky enough to go into the middle school, grade six math. And I was able to observe, because the eureka's new in the sixth grade too, as well as us in elementary, three different classrooms teaching the, basically the same lesson, but using different modalities and different technology. Because I know back at Franklin, we had been kind of struggling, at least in my grade level with, well, do you use the document camera? Do you use the whiteboard? Do you use your SMARTboard? Do you use the slides? I mean, there's so many, what was the best? And I was able to observe one teacher in the sixth that used the document camera but was able to still keep the engagement with the kids going even though she was at, you know, the computer. So I'm like, I think that would work. So I was able to go back to my building and share that with my grade four team saying, this is what I saw and it really seemed to work and the kids were, you know, very well engaged. And then at the high school, I was lucky enough to see a world Civ honors group and it was a big class. I think there were like 32 kids in the class I counted. It was packed. And it was really, really interesting to see how the teacher facilitated a really in-depth critical thinking discussion. And it got a little boisterous, but it, it was interesting again from grade four where we have those similar discussions, certainly not to that level. But to just facilitate and, and to get that critical thinking out of our students and to get them to, okay, this is your opinion, but what evidence do you have? You know, what research base can you pull from to back up what you're saying? So you, you know, you're doing it in grade 12 and I'm starting it in, in fourth. So to just see the continuity and like you said, in North Andover education, it's North Andover education and we're all in there doing the same, we're all in there. And I think our goal is the same and these walkthroughs are just fabulous for that. And I really want to thank you for the opportunity. And I was a little conflicted at first because as a teacher, you know, when you see a bunch of people walk into your room with clipboards. But Dr. Price is so great. She's like, make sure you smile. She said, if nothing else, make sure you smile when you go in there and have a friendly, open attitude. And, and now kind of seeing that, I think if we were to do it more in our building, I would certainly be the first one to say, absolutely, it's not evaluative, it's not judgmental. It's just, I mean, who doesn't want to see how other teachers do their thing? Because it's, it can be something to really watch and appreciate and learn from for sure. So.
Watching OBGYNs. I think you guys hit the nail on the head. I think one thing, and I've asked Dr. Price to talk a little bit about it from where previous district she came through, and the trust piece is critical, but the specificity in which you guys give information that's nonjudgmental, you know, two out of three classrooms, we saw this. In one classroom, we saw 22 out of 27 students doing this. I think that specificity without judgment is something that's really transparent and it's open. And you guys have been great. And I just have to say, the other piece is, it doesn't matter if it's Dr. Straight, Mr. Mealy, Dr. Price, myself, principals, we can walk into any room in this district and people expect us. We're welcome. Class isn't interrupted.
We walk to the back. It's not, you know, I remember when we started this six years ago somewhere, the teacher would, you know, say, everyone, this is Mr. Gilligan, say hi to Mr. Gilligan, you know, and it would be.
Stand in attention.
Yeah, you know, it reminded me of being in a broke-in scoop, good morning, Mr. Gilligan. Everyone sat down, sat down. You know, now for us to have the ability and for all of us as an administrative team, if it teaches and the peer observations of the high school, to walk into any room with adults and not be disruptive and to be able to observe, that's critical. And it's critical for us as leaders to know what's going on. And secondly, it's critical for principals. And I think is, you know, this Caffrey Zwingy said, you know, getting in those rooms in that enhanced role, that all ties over and carries into some really other remarkable things happening. One is the design time for collaboration at the elementary schools in the morning, the early release time. And that's what makes a difference. And sharing the best practices now that they're supported by resources, real resources, with true professional development plans and the money to support that is really exciting for this district. And I wanted to turn it over to Jen, because when I said that I think we're leading Massachusetts and New England, I really believe this, I've been in a lot of schools, a big network of people, and we've had Brooke line up to watch, do a go-throughout walk-throughs, we've had a lot of districts come because they say, North Andover knows how to do this. And a lot of places can't get by the cultural piece of this. And I want Jen to just talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, and I want to just take a moment to say that, you know, this was really working off of the work that Kevin Hutchinson did. And I think he really created the beginning of this. And truly, we've just refined, I think we did bring in the instructional rounds focus from Harvard with kind of the more next level of work, making it a little tighter. But kind of the concept of allowing the whole leadership team of the district to go into a school really started from Hutch. And I think, you know, just really building on his work. This is unique. There are not a lot of districts in Massachusetts that have this level of practice, especially involving teachers at this point. I mean, that's a, you know, if you think about our fishbone that we talk about, we talk about opening practice. And we wanted to say, if we're asking teachers to open their practice, we need to open our practice. And it's really unique. And we did this in Newton and it really just wasn't a trusting space often. It felt like people were putting on a show. It felt like people, the next level of work conversation rarely happened. The other thing is it took four or five hours. We have this down to about 90 minutes. We are a pretty well-oiled machine. We can go in, we can focus on what is the issue of practice, we can go observe for 30 minutes, and then we can really bang out our organization and next level of work in about 45 minutes. And so it's not taking all day. We're not asking teachers to leave their classrooms for the whole day. We really are able to do this quite in a focused way. The other thing that I really love about this is, if you think about it as a leadership team, we meet once a month together. We do instructional rounds once a month together. What does that say about what we value? There's lots of leadership teams in districts, lots of administrative teams in districts that spend the vast majority of their time on administrivia. We spend at least 50% of our time on teaching and learning. And that sends a really powerful message throughout the district, that that's something that's very, very important to us. And then the last thing is, you know, I still remember the first instructional rounds we did as, when I was superintendent, and that was looking at math instruction at the high school. And if you remember, because it's etched in my brain, we had a median SGP of 35 that year in math. If you remember, this year we got up to 52, I think, 51 last year.
51.5.
Yeah, and so, I mean, right, I mean, and it was really about when we went into math classrooms and we saw the differential of math and how kids were grouped and how it was being taught, that instructional rounds really formula, really kind of impacted what we did. So often, we're looking at kind of difficult situations for principals. We're not going and looking, you know, for instance, Joe talked about like, I'm struggling, Eureka's brand new, can you give us some feedback? What does, you know, whole group instruction look like compared to small group instruction and stations? And we had a really good conversation about that. I can promise you, every elementary is struggling with that, right? So for us to be able to go in and pick on something, you know, we call it an issue of practice under Lee Title's work, they actually call it a problem of practice. And I felt that that was too negative. However, that being said, we don't pick kind of what's working. We pick what we're working on. And we really are leading the nation. I will share with you that I'm actually inviting the leadership team from my next school to come up and watch this, because I think this is something that North Andover does better than any district I've ever been in or worked in. And many, many, many schools cannot fathom this level of openness and conversation. They just cannot fathom what it would look like, how it would sound. It's very scary, right? And we're drawing from, you know, they call it instructional rounds because it's drawing from medical rounds. This is what doctors and nurses do. They go and they look at patients and they talk about what they're doing and they share their practice. And it has been shown to really improve how patients are treated when we're open about our practice. I really believe, and I know this will continue because it's just a foundation of this district, it's really improving teaching and learning. And whether it's the teacher seeing another teacher, I love that, right? Or it's a principal watching another principal put kind of their challenges out there and sharing that. It really is about learning. And I just love that we do it. And I really put another district up in the country against this district in terms of this level of openness and conversation. And trust, I really think it comes down to trust.
For Principal Clark to put it out there, I mean Franklin, we're not hiding the fact that they had the least amount of Eureka map pilot, you know? So when you have a group come in and to have a young principal say, I want you folks to look at this, when, if I was the young principal, I'd probably be thinking, if we didn't have a setup like this, I better pick what we do best so that they can see that.
Right.
I mean, that speaks volumes.
My question was going to be around the issues of practice. So you all choose what you want to have the group look at. How do you determine that?
Well, this year was easy.
Yes.
It varies. Oh, thank you very much. It varies. In the past, I've chosen to look at typically how our special ed, you know, population is working in inclusion settings in the pull-out sessions. And usually that's centered around, you know, our students with disabilities subgroup was underperforming on MCAS. So sometimes I use that data to help me determine what it is. Sometimes I kind of just take my anecdotal notes about what's going on around the school, what's the culture like, where are we struggling, and where do I want the school to go? What's my vision for this coming year and the few years looking forward? And then sometimes it's personal. What do I need help with? You know, what could I benefit most from hearing this collective group of colleagues give me advice on? So it's a myriad of things. But this year, it was pretty easy to determine, you know, this is what I want us to look at. I want us to see how it goes. And when you think about trust, it's funny, because one of my first grade teachers had emailed me Friday night, and our walk-through is Monday morning, and she's like, Joe, I just have like my normal centers set up for math. Like, do I need to do something different for the watch? I'm like, no, 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 no. You do exactly whatever you had planned that day. I don't want you changing your plans. Like, do what you do. And, you know, truthfully, some of the most positive feedback we got was around the classrooms that had that center set up and how they could differentiate around that. So it was really, it was really impressive to see that. And we saw that, what I thought was cool is because you don't usually see that all the way up. Usually the center work is, you know, relegated to the more, the younger grades, K to two. But we saw some in each grade level and that was really cool, as we looked at the stickies across. And then there were things that, you know, we needed to work on when you're thinking about how we're framing our comments to students and the functionality of what they're doing. And it was a lot of good work to work on. And that's what I'm looking for. You know, it would be easy to say, hey, you know what? My teachers are killing it in Lucy Cockens writing right now. Everybody do Lucy Cockens writing, it's gonna be awesome. But that wouldn't push me as a leader and wouldn't push my school. And, you know, MCAS scores aside, we're always looking to do better. And how can we do better? And that's what.
That's good.
You know, frames it for me.
And I also think, you know, Joe learned from Greg Landry last year when he had us all looking at Lucy Cockens writing and asked the entire school.
Because he did it really well and he wanted it home.
And, but it was, but I would say that I see an incredible learning from principals around framing their issues of practice, learning from one another. I would also say that a number of principals often will reach out to me and say, Jen, I'm thinking about this. More in the first few years, because when I arrived is when we really did the issue of practice. So what did that look like less now? But I think folks reach out to each other, they reach out to any of us to help us frame the issues. And sometimes they're data-focused, like that math issue at the high school.
Oh, it was gonna be that.
It had to be that.
Yeah, I think for this year as an incoming principal for the first year, but having some experience back, I think you want to go to your team and ask them, do you want us particular focus? Because we can go department, we could go, you know, kind of, you know, humanities, we could go fine arts or wellness, or we can say, do we want a mixed lens? So I'd go to, you know, we want to be as inclusive from a leadership team and bottom up as possible. And to everyone, they said, we want to mix. Everyone would love feedback, so let's get as many. So the exciting part about this year and having the middle school host first and then us, is we could probably accommodate the most people to come through.
Right.
So the more people that came, the more classrooms we could go see. Now, any given period, we could have teachers on prep that wouldn't be available to be seen. But as I said at the start, we had 33 classrooms. If we would have had some more people come by, we would have got 40, you know, there too. So to get actually a wider lens to be able to see what is going on. And then the focus area, because we were doing the peer observation, that kind of, that just connected very well to us that, you know, it's a topic that is important to all kids.
Right.
And it's something in, you know, in my, you know, going through the interview process last year and some experience, it was something I wanted to do. But I think as a team, we were all in agreement. By the time Dr. Price and I, after kind of having some input the year before, there wasn't, you know, it was, it was pretty natural, actually, I'd say there. But Jen is always, you know, available, you know, on those two. If anything comes up, the good, one of the great things about this process and building trust is, you know, you can go to anyone. And if there's something going on there and we could come by, if we wanted to reconvene a team on, you know, in a couple of weeks, not next week, people would show up to help out. So I think it's a credit to the organization as well.
Well, it's also nice that you don't say, okay, for elementary school, we're all look at this at all the schools, because you all are at different places and different things. So the fact that you and your team and your staff direct that is critical.
And I also think, you know, we don't tell the principals what they do with the feedback. And we've been really sensitive to the fact that each school is in a different place. And I think, you know, each leader, a first-year principal compared to a 10-year, 10th-year principal. And we've really kind of, we come in and then we leave and we really allow the principal to lead. I think that's really important, because in some cases, you know, just putting the stickies up is enough. In some places, they put the whole next level of work up. But it really is, what's the culture of the building? What was the question being asked? And so we really try to leave that with the principals. Not that we're not there to talk about it.
That's good.
But we don't tell you what to do with it, right? I mean, that's.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And really what you, what your issue of practice is, sometimes helps dictate how you present it to your staff too. Because I've never shown that next level of work, but this year we will with the math, because it's such, you know, a hot topic for us right now. We're all learning it together. You know, we just made it through our first report card grading with this new math. So it was, it's something that's on all of our minds. So I think it's really important to say, because there was so much good in there too. And I think it's really important for teachers to hear that when they feel like they're struggling with something, whether or not they actually are, but when they feel like they're struggling. And, you know, Chet mentioned the email that he sends out and that's, it's such a great, great thing to do. And my email, you know, I gave him the, you know, this is, there's a lot of great things that were said, there's some things that we're gonna work on, it's gonna be great. And I ended it with a quote that Jen said, the way she ended our conversation. She said, you know what, but there's one thing that we can say that this morning, December 4th, 2017, 100% or if not, like 98% of Franklin School students were engaged in mathematics instruction. And that is, that's powerful. That is a powerful comment to say. Now, of course, you know, like Gilly said, if three adults come in, because they're probably a little bit like, oh, who are these people? I'm gonna pay attention a little bit more. But it is, but it's also telling of, like, the dedication that we have of our staffs and things like that to have a comment like that. I thought that was important for the staff to hear that day. Like, you did a great job. This is what we saw. We'll talk about it when we talk about it.
How many times is each school visited?
Once per year.
So you touched on this. If you're choosing, you're choosing the subject area where you want feedback because you're struggling with it, wouldn't there be value in the other school seeing your strength? Like, where you might be shining in Lucy Cockens, another school might be able to learn from that?
Yeah, I think there could absolutely be value to that as well. I think to give everyone an opportunity and do it once a month, kind of, the structure dictates that too. I think one of the other things we haven't touched upon is, as we go on, each principal is given an opportunity to give an update. So sometimes those conversations come up if someone else later is doing Lucy Cockens, for instance, and there's a different connection, because Joe may have done it the previous year. I think there is an opportunity at maybe a little higher level to share some work there, not at the level you can do on an individual day. But I think that nuance, that's kind of come up over the last couple of years to kind of update, has allowed us to flourish as well.
And also, it's typically not something that every single person would struggle with. There would be, you know, there's always some really strong teachers. But more importantly, the work of this carrying over for six district-wide Eureka days, we're all grade ones together, you know, for PD and all grade two and all grade three. And to be able to do that is really helpful for these guys to work with. Kara, for example, to help frame what that PD looks like based on the needs.
And I think we're also a collaborative bunch in terms of principals. And I think, I think for me, I view the instructional rounds as, how, I want to get everything I can out of this time. I want to know how I can help myself. But I think I know, for example, because last year's instructional rounds Jen mentioned at Atkinson around Lucy Cockens, Greg wanted to hear how it was going. Well, it was going awesome. So I know Atkinson is doing a fantastic job with Lucy Cockens. If I have a question about writing or I have anything, I'm gonna call up Greg and say, hey, what are you guys doing? You know, how's second grade and Lucy Cockens? What are they doing for this? My teacher's had a question. So I, we talk enough that I think we know where each other's strengths are and we kind of can go directly to the source for help on that, if we're looking for something like that.
Would there be an opportunity for a teacher to also go do that?
Yeah, we're actually, I'm, I, there's a teacher at the Sergeant School right now who is teaching, I believe she's teaching kindergarten. And a few of my first grade teachers, we've set up with the reading coaches, Ann Joyce and Jaclyn Taylor, we've set up an opportunity for them, when we come back from break, to go over there to observe her, because she's piloting the Lucy Cockens reading workshop model. So they're gonna go over and take a look at that and see how that's going, because she's doing, I hear she's doing fantastic with it, so.
She's doing.
Yeah, I know, right? Yeah.
I would say one of the other things is because we have the coaches now, the coaches are in classrooms all across the district. So if a first grade is thinking about that, or if there's a fourth grade teacher struggling at one school, they know who the fourth grade teacher is throughout the district that is doing that and feeling comfortable about that. So we are seeing an increasing amount of connection, because we have these coaches and they're able to kind of say, well, you know who's doing a really great job at that? And those connections are happening. And I think having the teachers as part of the walk-throughs too, because a lot of the FCI's are coming, and we've had a huge number of them, they're starting to see across the way and able to connect across the district. Plus, the collaborative days where the first graders are meeting, first grade teachers are meeting, the second grade teachers, we're starting to really see that connection.
But even, for example, with the coaches, so they see every classroom once every five weeks.
Every grade.
Yeah, every grade. Thompson and Atkinson, as a result of that, Eureka's very language-rich. So Thompson and Atkinson have the highest population of EL students. So that, you know, we had an opportunity to connect the fourth grade teachers at Thompson and Atkinson to work around strategies and lessons and debrief how the first module went with EL learners and some more specific strategies for them, because their classes have the opportunity. So I think that's something in the past, we wouldn't have had the opportunity to do without the structures in place to connect Thompson and Atkinson on a specific day, so.
I think it's important to mention, I know I mentioned it when we were talking about MCAS and we were talking about all that, but in terms of the math too, Val Drenin has been such an incredible resource this year. I know fourth grade utilized her for one of the half-day planning session. And then I think they were just reaching out to her this morning to say, hey, can you come to our next collaborative meeting right after break to talk about the next module and things like that? So I think, you know, we talk about time, we talk about the collaborative nature and all of these things. And we are just in such a different place, you know, from when 2004, when I started my first second grade teaching job over at Atkinson, as a teacher, you know, sort of on my own As a teacher, you know, sort of on my own little island, trying to figure it out, walking into an empty, or a room full of boxes from the lady who left and just left all her boxes there. And now where some of my newer teachers, I have a first-year third-grade teacher here, and because our teams are so solid and so collaborative in nature already, she has just really come in to the groove and is soaring. And it's just, it's incredible to see. And like, are these first-year teachers, these new teachers coming in to have the support system in place already and not have to try to build that around them? Say, hey, who can we get to support you? You know, they have their mentoring program, which is awesome, but they also have this team around them. And, and it's been incredible, just being able, the collaborative change in North Andover has really impacted teaching and learning.
And that's a direct impact, again, of the beginning of the FCIs, our ability to do the enhanced department coordinators, our ability to have a, a union negotiation that create a collaborative time every morning, our ability to have Medicaid funding to buy curriculum resources, and our ability over the last few years to, uh, fund coaches. So it's exciting, as we head into budget time, to see budget decisions that we're making are just being reflected in this conversation.
If you think about it, how many teachers do you think we have in the district? Probably three fifty, three sixty. You know, in the last two years now, we've trained fifty through research for better teaching as part of the mentoring program. So they've been through the skillful teacher, and, you know, as we scale up and move on, it's going to be incredible that we get all those people through a really solid program.
So I, I think this is fantastic, and, and thank you very much for, for your time. I know it's always tough around the holidays, but, you know, uh, I'm sure you could be at the mall or something. What?
Woo-hoo!
Yes, that's, that'll be me and you on the twenty-fourth.
That's on the twenty-fourth.
Um, so, I mean, I, I loved kind of hearing like that whole North Andover education, right? So I mean, that's something I think we've been talking about for so long, right? You know, and Mr. Gilligan, you know, early on, kind of, you know, what's the curriculum, you know, for third grade, for fourth grade, et cetera, kind of as we go through. Um, I'm just wondering why, and maybe this is a question for you, Dr. Price, why did we start with kind of modeling high school and the middle school first? Um, as opposed to some of the elementaries? And, and I, it's, it's, it's probably like damned if you do, damned if you don't, right? But, you know, like, I love the example that you had about like, how are they doing Eureka Math in sixth grade? And how can we do that? And I'm just wondering if, like, there's a better way to maybe make sure that all of our elementaries, you know, can, can, can learn from each other that way?
So I, well, I would just say, every year at, in August, we say, all right, here's the months, who wants what month? That was really what happened. Um, and each year, we've kind of switched it around. But there were some thoughts about it, actually.
I was going to say, this year it was sort of strategic, because we were opening our practice, and we were thinking about the vast majority of people, and we wanted to get the most people in those first times, if I remember correctly.
Because we can't take fifty people at the ECC.
Right, right.
Um, so by doing the high school and the middle school, we felt we could train the most amount of people and get people in. You just can't have, I mean, if fifty people in ten classrooms, it doesn't work.
I've gone in October, I've gone in May, and this year I went in December. It's, it's pretty much, yeah, it's kind of just like, hey, who wants this one, who wants that one? Okay. Yeah. All right, that, I mean, that makes some sense, so.
Yeah, and, and, and it's, um, you know, we, once a month gets us to all eight schools. We don't do June, because you don't want to. And we don't do September.
Right.
So.
And we don't do the day before Monday.
Right.
Okay.
So I, I just, it's really exciting to hear your enthusiasm and to hear, um, how it's going and, and what's happening. I know, as a new teacher, going into other classrooms was so helpful to me when I was getting started. And I, I know during the superintendent search process, um, we had an opportunity to visit a couple of classrooms with one of our candidates, um, here in North Andover. And, and it's true, I mean, the teachers were, were glad to see us, the students just kept right on doing their work. Um, you know, we walked out of the classroom and we, you know, we talked about a couple of things, like, there were objectives written on the board, there were, you know, supporting, um, you know, visuals around the room, there were, you know, just things that you can easily observe. So I mean, that was just a tiniest snippet of, of how great it is, but hearing your enthusiasm, um, is really, it's really exciting, and I'm really glad that you're able to do that, because you can grow so much, and if, if we're not growing as educators, um, there's no way we can expect that students are going to be growing. So I think that's really great, thank you.
I can, I, I like the mention of students, because I can say that actually, my daughter reported when you went into her English teacher's class this week. And she said, you know, it was a newer teacher, and she said, you know, she came in, you just snuck in the back, but the teacher did a great job. But she said, when you walked out, the teacher's like, ah! And the students were like, you did great, it was great! They totally know, but they are on board and supporting the teacher as well, right? So they want the teacher to succeed and see that they're doing good work. But, um, you know, I think it is valuable that kids see that you're just not making expectations of the kids to grow and learn, but that the teachers as well. Um, so I thought that was a really cute, uh, story, but I, I, they do realize how important it is, what you're all doing. And I, I was with Helen when we went into the classrooms, and the students didn't move either way, like, whatever.
And that particular candidate didn't bring a jetty. Did you want to try this room or?
Right, right.
But I think on a, on a nice way, though, to kind of wrap this up is, you know, this is something we've always asked teachers to do, you know, to collaborate and share practice. And for us to be able to model it, and for then the teachers to know it's transparent, and then be able to do some of this work with their kids. And I never even thought of what you just said, I mean, it starts from the top and it goes all the way down to, I mean, what high schools have kids that are supporting the teachers like, yay, you did well when your boss came?
But that was, but they, but they totally understood, that was what, I mean, I'm sure you snuck in the back and it was nobody, but.
But that's a special culture.
Yeah, the kids were psyched to, to, like, cheer on their teacher, I thought that was good, right?
It doesn't faze them to see adults that are not regular in their school.
Yes.
Walk in and they know that, you know, they're, they're walking with a principal or, you know, somebody else, and, and that they're, they're, they're just there and they're present.
Right.
But five or six years ago would have been really.
Oh, would have been the whole, everybody stop everything, we have a guest, it would have taken ten minutes to settle back down, and you wouldn't have seen anything real, probably, right? So.
Also, it's nice to see former students that are like, oh, how?
Yeah, exactly. That's great.
Maybe not always.
No, super enthusiasm, it's great, this is, it's very exciting to hear from all of you, and thank you for coming out tonight, appreciate it.
Carrie, thanks for sharing a little bit about the enhanced department coordinator role. You know, we had, it had been asked about, and, you know, I think we made a budgetary decision last year to do it. And, um, it's just exciting to have curriculum leadership at the high school in a powerful way that allows teachers to feel supported. Um, because as you get to the high school, being able to think about English instruction as it differs from math instruction to science instruction, I think is really important. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, happy birthday.
I'd like to suggest, I think it might make sense if we do a little bit of adjusting, this ties kind of directly to the Lead the Nation website a little bit, right? If we can maybe do that, and then, um, talk about the Johnson School Bell, because we have a guest for that as well, and then we could do the Ecuador at the end.
Yes, that's great. So, um, as many of you may or may not know, um, Massachusetts has been seen as leading the nation in terms of its public schools. So, uh, lots of different ways that that is being measured. APs, PISA, which is the international, um, exam that many of our kids take, NAEP exam. Um, and really, Massachusetts is seen pretty universally as the best public school system in the nation. And so this spring, Massachusetts is going to be celebrating the fact that we are leading the nation. And, uh, we have, uh, they've reached out to seventy districts in the Commonwealth, uh, North Andover is one of them, to really say, how are you leading, um, Massachusetts, which is leading the nation? So, uh, one of the things they've asked us to do is think about, could we develop a website that would really talk about how we're leading the nation? And since we have the amazing Hillary, um, we said, hey, Hillary, how about creating a website? Um, and it was really actually very fun for us to put together. So we really said, how are we leading the nation in, in North Andover? What are things that we are doing that are really unique, um, compared to other schools? And so we really came down with four issues, um, all framed in our strategic plan. So this is a website that if, with your permission, we're going to launch tomorrow, um, and we're going to, um, connect with the state. Um, and you'll see that we did four things. So the first is Raise, and that you can click on there, Mr. Mealy, if you look at Raise, it goes directly to our BRC website, if you click on, yeah. And it really explains all about when is our, what's our BRC, what are Raise values, what is the history of Raise, um, and all the different things that we're doing around Raise. All right, and then if you go back up, you can, if you go up to the top, Mr. Mealy, you'll be able to, yeah, great, instructional leadership. So some of the things, um, that we highlighted there were the teaching and learning website. I don't know if you've looked at that, but people from all over the state look at our teaching and learning website about our different curriculum guides, everything that's going on in all of our different areas. Um, we also have on that tab, the instructional rounds, which is actually what we were looking at during the instructional rounds presentation, was the leading the nation, uh, website there. So, um, if you.
And their winning sweater.
Uh, there we are, the winning sweater. That's, Mr. Gilligan's, uh, uh, tweets go there. Uh, Hillary has been able to put our tweets in, I'll show you when you go back to the leading the nation. Uh, can you go back to that, Mr. Mealy?
Back to the one we just were at?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Sue, we're, you just mentioned like that we know that we're getting hits from like other towns and other communities. Have we done any, or are we enabled to kind of track where that's coming from? Like, we may start to see some of that kind of within the state, but if Massachusetts is starting to do that, and, and maybe this is, you know, somehow connected into the mass.gov, mass-ed.gov, or, you know, whatever the, the site is, you know, are, are we getting hits from Ohio? Or, not, not that I necessarily care, but I'm just curious if.
Good question.
So the funny thing, and the funny piece of this, Andrew, is a lot of the information's the same, but until Hillary made it less clicks and made it look a lot better, uh, I was at a meeting with Lorraine Marks in Andover, and they were educators from all over the state, with Shelley Mermon did a presentation on social studies and social emotional learning. I was sitting at a table with Lorraine, and the people from Berlin, Boylston, and a group from the Cape was sitting right behind us. And, um, they said, oh, where are you from? They didn't know what we did. We said, oh, from North Andover, like, oh my God. Both of them said, we've been scouring the website, we've been stealing stuff from the, you know, from the. So it was just funny that we had folks that we had never met, never heard of, um, say that. But it would be interesting to ask Mike Grant if we could track.
Yeah, we could ask.
He can track just about anything.
Oh, sure he can. I, I mean, not any extra effort or anything, but I just, you know, is, is our message being spread?
Right. So also, an instructional leadership is the instructional rounds, the five-year curriculum plan, which we don't need to see. But the two other issues that are really interesting is the coaching model. So we just sent out an email, um, about our coaching models, we have a math coach and we have literacy coaches. And this is all around what does the coaching model do? What can we do, what supports can we create? This is a really exciting document about what does coaching look like, what, what different aspects you can have someone do co-plan a lesson, you can have, do co-teaching, um, you can do a demonstration, we'll come in and observe. Um, this is actually a really wonderful document that we just wanted to share about what our coaching model is. Um, we also, um, on that part, um, if you, you can see, we also put up our collaboration toolbox, which is really around, um, obviously, our wonderful fishbone, um, the language from the contract. I know that it seems like it's, we're used to it, but the fact that we have time negotiated into our contract, and it did not cost us any additional money, is like crazy, right? I mean, that we have agreed to give teachers that amount of time, so we actually put the language there, a whole bunch of resources and links. Then if you scroll down a little bit more, you'll see that we have, um, different indicators, what are our indicators of success? What is everybody's role in, um, different parts of, um, the collaboration model? Um, and so what, and again, just documents that we're sharing about how we do it, how does it really look like? Um, so, there. And then the last part, um, and then our technology supports actually goes to one of Mr. Grant's, um, most recent presentations to all of you about how we've increased, um, student technology, the model classroom, all of that. You've already seen that. Um, our innovative partnerships, so if you go and look, um, again, how are we leading the nation? This is just a list of all of our innovative partnerships, from Fit Money to the robotics, to Lilif, to the Youth Center, to Understanding Our Differences. All of those are links to Stevens Memorial Library, to the Boston Celtics that we're doing with, um, to the Capstone Projects. Um, and again, all of these are links that you can go and see what they are, um, which is exciting. And then the last is our social emotional learning. We are one of the few districts in the state of Massachusetts that has a director of social emotional learning. And this is a wonderful website that Nikki Murphy and team have put together about what is social emotional learning? What are different aspects of social emotional learning? What, how are we actually teaching social emotional learning? Who are our resources? Um, and then back to the last, to the website, you can see some other aspects of it. I thought, um, it made sense to put my graduation speech last year, where I talked about Raise, um, because I think Raise is something we do that is really leading the nation, a community set of values. And then also really cool is any of us, principals, uh, Mr. Gilligan, myself, any of us who tweet anything that says, um, leading the nation, hashtag leading the nation or hashtag Raise, actually goes on to this website. So you can go to the top of that, you can see Mr. Gilligan just tweeted something about the principals, um, being here, and that was on the Twitter feed, I thought, I saw there.
It was there.
It was there. Scroll it up, yeah. So that's us right now, and he just did hashtag leading the nation. And so it's an opportunity for schools to kind of really showcase what they're doing around Raise or leading the nation. So, and then we just put some sta- um, statistics to kind of prove that we, we deserve to be here. You know, our graduation rates, I mean, you can see that they've gone up and that they're much, much higher than the state average. Um, you can see our dropout rate last year was zero. Um, and then you can also just see, again, I kept it at the high school level, um, just kind of where we are in terms of, we are above the state average, again, the, the best state average in, in the country, um, around, um, all of our MCAS at the high school level. We kept that because it's a legacy test, and you can look at it over time, and it, and, and then a picture on the bottom, and that's pretty much it. So, um, that's the robotics team, for the VEX robotics team. So, um, I think we'll probably be the first website out of the gate, um, in the state of Massachusetts. Um, and we're going to plan to send it off tomorrow. Um, there'll also be a way from our main website where it'll just say, how is North Andover leading the nation? And you'll be able to click right on to this website.
Did you write all that copy? Like, the coaching model and?
No, so the coaches wrote that, that was actually an email we sent out to all of the staff about what is a coach. The five-year curriculum plan's been there. I did write, I did write the instructional rounds copy. A lot more, it was really just kind of taking a bunch of stuff, the collaboration toolbox is something we shared with the leadership team in August. So it was really saying, okay, how are we leading the nation? And then we just started pulling things that we had already written.
And we also have some other sites that are only for teachers, resources for teachers that are, you know, bookmarked for them. Wait, can I make one last plug?
Yes, of course you can.
Ms. Larkum and Val Drenin, the math coach, if you guys have seen the tweets, and it's under the academic section now, they're really happy to launch something called Bedtime Math. It's an app for three-year-olds and nine-year-olds. And that's something parents have been asking for, for a little while, um, so we're pretty excited about.
And that's in the curriculum site, so, um, but it, so most of this, I mean, like, all of the, we had to write the innovative partnership copy, because we just had all these different partnerships. And I also say, this isn't static, some might, you might look at and say, how about that partnership? And we'll say, oh, how about that partnership? So, um, eh, the idea was to just kind of get it started here. Um, I will say that Nikki Murphy has really worked with Hillary to create the social emotional learning website, which then we were just able to link.
That's great.
And, and we didn't start out with four, um, but we kind of talked as a leadership team, we are willing to think of other ways. We just really didn't want it just to be around MCAS scores and testing. We wanted to talk about how we're, right, I mean, how are we? And I feel like in all of these areas, as we talked about with instructional rounds today, like, we're doing things differently than a lot of other places in these areas. I mean, Raise is sort of unheard of. I mean, there's not a lot of communities that have a set of values that almost everybody can say. Um, instructional leadership, we talked about, we're partnering with a ton of people, our partnership with the library, all these places. And then, you know, this, this focus on social emotional learning, it's, we are really kind of ahead of the curve on that.
And I would just argue that I think that we helped set the state down a different path with leading the nation.
We did.
You know, a particular superintendent, uh, and myself met with the leading the nation representative, and, um, I think she almost had a stroke to begin with at the meeting, because, um, it was really, the focus was solely on MCAS. And, um, the superintendent mentioned, well, we, we have hashtag leading the nations here, but fifty percent of the kids in three through eight aren't meeting expectations. Um, and I think Jen's idea around, like, all the other important things, too, not, including academics, but all the other stuff, I think it helps set her, working with other schools, and I think we'll see other schools somewhat model this, because they, they really came in with a heavy focus on strictly just like straight-up MCAS, and.
To potentially sell their new format?
Yeah, for, well, for leading the nation, and I think Jen, you know, articulated some of the things she said in the Boston Globe, that, in that article. And I think, honestly, I think that this is the right way to go, and I think it's going to really help with the state, because they came in and a day later, this was at least half-created with Hillary and the, some of the existing, existing stuff.
Yeah, they haven't even launched their website yet, so we will, I think, be the first in the state.
Yeah, to me, this just is evidence of the bang for the buck that we're getting in North Andover. You know, the excellent work that, that you all are doing all the time, and just being able to capture it is really, it's terrific.
Super impressive.
It's not a Christmas pun, but I mean, I feel like this just ties it all together and puts a bow on it. I mean, this really just encapsulate, I can't speak today. It really just pulls it all in, I love it. It's great.
I think Hillary needs a raise.
She's amazing. I mean, and, and really, I will say the other amazing thing with her is I said, how about this idea? And like, three days later, she came in with it completely formatted, ready to go. I mean, I think it's also, it looks beautiful, doesn't it? I mean, it's very easy to, it's easy to click through, it's, it's engaging, the fact that we can have a Twitter feed that's going to be changing.
And I did get a call from another North Shore School District, asking if she was part-time and could she work the other part-time? Down the road. True story.
So we will, if, with, I don't think we need a vote, but I just wanted to make sure you guys are all okay that we launch this tomorrow.
Yeah.
And we'll talk about it in the January website, the January newsletter, and, um, yeah, it, it does pull it all together, you know, in a nice place. It was actually very fun to do, we weren't really all that excited about doing it at first, because it was like, oh, here's something from the state. It was actually nice to put it all in one place and say, wow, look what we do, yeah.
And it's not a laundry list, I mean, we could add a zillion other things, but to put meaningful things and say this kind of represents these areas is more meaningful.
Okay, that's fantastic, thank you all. Be out there tomorrow. Um, if we might bring, um, the plaque for Johnson School Bell discussion to the forefront, invite our dear Mr. Limpert to come talk a little bit, uh, give a little bit of background about what this is all about.
After that last discussion, I'm reminded that.
After that last discussion, I'm reminded that we always do our best work right before we have to hand the paper in, so we pull it all together right at the end. That, that really does look outstanding. Makes us look smarter than we probably really are, so just saying, you know. That really is, oh, sorry, really good stuff. I've been talking to Ms. Mabley about a project that we've kind of been working on for a while, and it's kind of been on hiatus, but now we're going to try to get back to it, which is to identify the bell now that's out in front of the administration building, which has been on this property for 50 years. Well, it's been on this property since 1867, and it's had numerous locations, but now that it's in a prominent location, we wanted to try to identify it for the citizens of North Andover. And we're proposing to put a brass plaque that would have this text and this picture on it. That is Johnson High School and Stevens Hall in the 1880s, probably, circa 1880s. And this would be a plaque that would go next to the, next to the bell. You can, you know, you've had an opportunity probably to read this text. This, this plaque really is to explain what the bell is, not to really explain what the building was. It has, it has other facts associated with this, which I don't think is appropriate to sort of put in this plaque. We can do something else. And as part of this project, it turned out that Superintendent-elect Gilligan had liberated a plaque that was found at the middle school that identified World War II veterans of the school district. And the plaque, it's not clear where the plaque might have been. It might have been at Johnson, at Johnson High, it might have been in one of the many remodelings of the middle school, which was originally the high school. When Johnson, when this building was torn down in 1954, it was replaced by what is now our middle school, which was the high school. So that plaque could have been, not clear where. We're going to do some more research on that and try to figure that out. But the proposal is to have two plaques, one on either side of the bell, this plaque and that plaque, and let people know something about what the history of this location is. So that's the, that's the plan. I just wanted to mention that when this high school was originally opened in the, in the mid-1800s, it had a very small enrollment, like, a dozen or two dozen for a number of years, because students couldn't get there. They didn't have transportation. They just couldn't literally physically make it there. So until transportation became available, which it did like in the 1880s and 1890s, the enrollment was very small, a dozen or two who were probably in town and could walk up to here. But all the out, out districts, they couldn't come, so they didn't go. So they would go to district schools, and then, once they were done with that, they just stopped their education and didn't go to high school. So, it was interesting to know that. So, any questions about this that I can answer?
So, I just have one small question. I think outside, there is currently some form of a plaque there. Like, we're not removing that plaque, right? There is, is there something there? There's nothing at all?
Nothing at all.
Nothing at all.
I thought there was something there.
No.
I have to admit, when Mr. Limpert contacted me about this, I was like, whoa, what bell? I'd already walked by that for a year, every day that I came here. And I'm like, oh, I've kind of noticed that, but I just like, just walked right, I didn't know what it was there for. And it's kind of appalling that I, that there's, there is nothing there. So...
I thought there was a plaque of some sort.
No.
There's a small grave marker, that's brass, representing, the police left it behind. It says, "North Andover Police," it's a badge, and that's off to the side.
But it's not related to the bell.
It's not a plaque, it's not related to that.
No.
I honestly thought there was like something, because it's on the cement, I thought there was something in there.
Because we actually, I went out there with Mr. Mealy one day to like, look at.
Nope.
I trust you.
Yeah, but I honestly walked by that and kind of, maybe, sort of a little bit noticed it, but not really.
We originally planned, but hadn't decided what it was going to be, so it hasn't happened yet.
So we're trying to circle back and work that.
So it isn't grave, though?
Right, the bell.
Maybe that's why.
That's the clapper.
Okay. Yeah.
It has like some dates.
Superintendent-elect Gilligan has tasked me with finding a clapper for the bell too, as part of the project, so we'll see how we deal with that, right.
And, Mr. Limpert, you did, as part of your work with Historical Society, you've involved those colleagues as well, so...
Correct, yes. This has all been given the historical once-over on all of that, and they approve of all the facts that are herein contained, so.
My only concern about the clapper is Superintendent-elect Gilligan will start ringing the bell.
Really, ringing said bell? Well...
I just want to be clear that you know that's going to happen.
I understand. Dr. Price, as you can...
Just giving you fair warning.
As you can well imagine, just like the mills were called in by their bells, that's what this bell was intended to do, is call students to school, right? So, Mr. Gilligan could at least call Kittredge, I mean.
I would be ringing it right now, because I think the liability insurance would go through the roof, the students standing on the top-left corner.
Yeah, I'm feeling it.
That's the custodian.
So, just to answer one...
This is superintendent.
To answer one, one question about, that came up about this, Johnson High School was named after a resident here in North Andover who was a merchant, who donated money for the clock tower on that structure. And so, that, he, because of that, he was given the right to name part of the building. Part of that building was also called Stevens Hall, which was donated, some money was donated by the Stevens family for that. That was originally the, the meeting place for the town, for its town meetings and other activities of that nature. So those are the two uses of the building, and for a number of years, this was also where the town offices were in this building too, so it served multiple purposes.
What are you imagining the plaque will be made out of?
Brass.
So, similar to...
Just like that. It'll be the same size as that, just with that. And it's, you know, this is just...
And it will have a picture of the building?
It'll have an etched picture, just like that. And my latest brainstorm, but we'll, I have to talk to the powers that be here. I was thinking about the possibility of putting at the bottom of the picture, maybe, an engraved QR code that people could scan and go to a website, since we have our master web builder, that would have more details about Johnson High School, the building, the history, blah, 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 that you couldn't put on a plaque. So that's one thought, and you can, you all can think about that. That would be one enhancement to what we've proposed here, but this is my suggestion.
Stan, I want to thank you for taking us on. This is, this is great. I'll say, my kids have come in the building and said, "Why is there a bell here?" And I said, "I don't know."
Well, I just, first, I should just tell you all, this was an outgrowth of a project that started with the Bradstreet, right? When the Bradstreet was being demolished, on the back of the school were some large stones which said, "Bradstreet School, North Andover," and the dates of the three buildings that were, had been built there, 1885, 1911, and 1948. And it seemed like those needed to be preserved. So I, through the Historical Society, obtained a CPA grant for, for that, but also included this plaque exercise as part of that. The stones still exist, all, you know, and they're piled up in the back of the middle school, awaiting some other use. And there had been some thought at some point of maybe building a monument here at the, at the administration building with those stones, and then adding plaques similar to this, but probably smaller for all the significant North Andover schools that have since been torn down. The Merrimack School, quite a significant school, which is where St. Michael's is, the Union School, which was down near where Mr. Gilligan lives, the Center School, which is near the old center. So, some added plaques, that was one thought, but we never got very far with that. But it's, anything's possible, anything's possible. So we still have that as an option.
I think, I mean, first of all, thank you for doing this. This is fantastic. I remember when the building opened, and I know Dr. Price came in, I'm thinking it was probably June of 2015 or so, Selectman Rosemary Conley Smedeely, Smedeely Conley, said, "Well, there's no, there's nothing that tells us that Johnson High School was here." And I said, "Oh, like, we've got the bell, and the bell's here." And she's like, "Oh, I walked past it, I didn't even notice it."
Thank you.
And so, you know, we had the conversation about, like, you know, somehow the bell was found in somebody's attic or something, and then brought and mounted there. But I mean, I think kind of to put some form of memorial is definitely a nice thing to do.
I think it makes sense, and I think, you know, it offers a sense of continuity. You know, that, that this has been an educational site since 1867. And so I think that's kind of interesting. And to everybody's great chagrin, many residents' great chagrin, this, this bell has been sitting out in front of a building on the site since 1968. It was sitting out in front of the police station, which nobody noticed. You know, there were bushes around it that sort of overgrown it, so you could hardly see it.
It had a horse trough.
Right.
And the horse trough, which is out, yeah.
And they moved out to the old center.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, anyway, it seemed like an appropriate thing to do.
That's great.
You know, with your support, we'll proceed, and the next step would be to get a, like a formal layout from someone who would actually cast a plaque for us, and, you know, take the next step. And, you know, the funding's available, so it's at no cost to you.
We still have, I was going to say, that CPC funding has already been approved, and it's still waiting for us to enjoy.
Absolutely, so, that's great. Part of that project.
I love it.
Excellent.
Okay, so...
Thank you, thank you.
Should I, what should I do?
I don't know, next steps is...
Does this require a vote?
I, I, I mean, it's, the firm head nod would be good enough, I think.
Yes, I think, I think it'd be...
We're doing the thumbs up today.
Very happy, yes, very happy to go back to making this happen.
The next step would be to get with someone who would actually make the plaque, lay it out, and bring it back, sort of for your final approval of what it would actually look like.
And would they incorporate that?
Yeah, and I would take that and have that somehow refurbished, you know, so it'd be, you know, appropriate. And then we have to have some mounting things built and stuff, so we'll do all of that. We know how to do that sort of stuff.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're using your retirement well.
This project over Stan will start on the bell that's in the courtyard of the middle school.
I'd, I'd, happy to be that one.
That's good. Thank you.
That's a mystery.
We'll figure it out.
I was going to say, Stan will figure it out, right. So, now if we can zip back to another service trip proposal, I see.
Yes, so, this is another, let's just be clear, when this is? We're talking about April 9th through 18th in 2019. Nothing like being organized, right? But this is to Ecuador and the Galapagos. Again, similar to a lot of the service trips we've been doing.
This would be a first time?
This would be the, this would be the first time we've been going there. It's through EF again. As you know, we've been using EF, and, and this would just be a different opportunity for our kids.
It looks amazing. I looked at the itinerary.
Dr. Price, can you give us a little bit of the history of how service trips got started? And it's relatively new in North Andover.
It is really new. It was, Ms. Morley, her first one was to the Dominican Republic, and she took a few kids to that. It was incredibly successful. And now kind of each year, they've been taking a trip with EF. So, you know, EF is a big organization that gives lots of opportunities. It would be very hard to do it without an organization like EF, because they have support on the ground, they have medical support on the ground, they set up all these opportunities for kids.
But, but what was the impetus? Like, what was the, was it...
It was Ms. Morley.
An excited teacher that wanted to share some things?
I think it's really Ms. Morley, but I could be wrong. Before my time.
I think it grew a little bit out of a couple things. One is, there's been a long talk, even before we had the capstones, of doing something different with the kids, experiential learning. And I think a little bit of it, the, the success that some of the world language trips had, I think it just kind of, was kind of, it was a grassroots effort, definitely, by a few teachers, Ms. Morley in particular.
Yeah, and Kelly Driscoll's really involved, and so, you know, and they've been so successful that we're just continuing them.
Yeah, and I mean, I know a lot of districts are making a specific charge to, to do service work and to offer service opportunities to students. So I was just wondering if that was, you know, a philosophical thing, or, I mean, it sounds like it was maybe the perfect, not storm isn't the right thing, but like, the perfect combination of interests and abilities that came together.
And, you know, there is a part of our strategic plan to really kind of give these different opportunities, innovative opportunities for our kids, and, you know, to come in and to have created Lilith and that. I think, you know, at least in my time, I've been incredibly supportive of these projects, and I think that, you know, I think one of the questions is access. I mean, this is an expensive trip, but we do have a fund that's going to be able to support kids who can't go. So, it's that kind of commitment that we've had. And just the understanding, I mean, I have a strong feeling that these are life-changing opportunities for kids, and I think, you know, us being willing to allow kids to do this. There are some districts that are not supportive of this, and I think coupled support from all of us, and then teachers who are willing to do it. I mean, having chaperone trips like this, it is a lot of work. And so, folks are taking their vacations and being with kids, and so you have to have the teachers who are willing to do it. It's not something we could ever force a teacher to do.
Right, right.
Well, I've had the opportunity now to go to the Lilith dinner twice, and parents and students have come to speak about exactly the fact that this has been life-changing for them. In what ways? The young student who came this year, who came back from college, and, and talked about the fact that this helped redirect, she's only a freshman in college, but redirect her desire to join the Peace Corps when she graduates. And she said it was directly from this experience.
Yay.
And we're, in front of the whole crowd this year at Lilith, we, Dr. Price not, might not be back, but more importantly, her wife has agreed to come back to do the cooking for five years.
For five? Five, wow.
I'll tell her that.
That was never you put on. So my only concern, I mean, I think that this is fantastic. My only concern is that this is approximately a $5,000 trip.
It's very expensive.
And I know that it is, I might miss the dates here, but I mean, I think it was roughly a 10-day trip. I'm not sure, it was somewhere.
It said up to four.
I mean, I just feel like that's a really expensive trip. So the only thing I would be cautious of is, you know, while it would be fantastic to go here, what other places are also fantastic that maybe are not $5,000?
Yeah, you know, there's no doubt that this is expensive. I can tell you from personal experience, going to the Galapagos is incredibly expensive. It's one of the most expensive trips you can do out there. So, I can go back to Ms. Morley. I think they're just trying to, you know, diversify where they're going.
Right.
Well, one of my questions, because of the date, 2019, is I know, my daughter's planning to go to the Dominican this year, Dominican Republic trip, and they have fundraising opportunities to, you know, she sold chocolates and things like this. Maybe they were going so early to give them a lot more time to fundraise for a longer window?
Yeah, I mean, that is one advantage, kids, if they know they want to go, they've got a long time to be able to fundraise.
Well, and, and I would compare too. I mean, like, the Yellowstone trip is $3,500.
I was just going to say.
So it's only $1,300 more. I mean, I'm saying only, but, you know, I mean, it's a lot farther away. It's a, you know, a lot different sort of experience. So I think if, you know, if families are thinking about spending $3,500, to, to add $1,300 to that is not such a stretch. But, I mean, and obviously, families are making choices about, you know, are you going to the Dominican, or are you going to the Galapagos, or are you going to, you know, Yellowstone? I would doubt many would be going to all of them.
Yeah, I don't think I realized that Yellowstone was $3,500. I was thinking it was...
This is, so as, we support a ton of trips in Newton. This is not out of line for what trips are costing.
But I think having, I liked this longer window specifically for, if a child, a student strives to do that, they can take on summer work, or there are ways that they can, their parents can help them figure out how to make that happen without just saying, you know, "Mom, Dad, I want to go here. Can you hook me up? Thanks," right? But having more time to do that.
Yeah, there's no doubt. It is, it's more expensive than our, but our Dominican trips are, I think, almost $3,000, right? They're 27, 28, I think.
I think it's close to $3,000.
It's $3,000.
I thought we did it last year, so I forget.
And it, and she does say in her proposal too, that, you know, they're looking at, like, every other year, doing something, you know, a bigger trip than a smaller trip.
But, yeah, it is huge money.
And I would, you know, I would add too, I mean, what I've been noticing at the high school, Mr. Jackson asked all the clubs to do some sort of local service work one of the weekends in November. So, I mean, all these, all these students are having multiple opportunities, lots and lots of opportunities to serve and learn about our global neighborhoods.
I, I think if, if we're actually really going to set the pattern of, you know, really big kind of extravagant, I'm not saying extravagant, but outrage, just kind of trap a little bit, you know, and then something that's a little bit more manageable, I think there's, an alternating pattern of that, I think, is, is good. Or conceivably even, you know, I don't know if every three years makes sense, but I mean, I do like at least there being an alternate.
Yep, and she did talk about that in the other...
Yeah, that's my only concern. I mean, I...
Okay, I, if there are any other questions, I consider only the first readings.
Yeah, that's great.
Awesome.
Any public comment? Oh, yay!
Should I just say that?
We haven't had public comments so long.
Yeah, and it's not going to be about the swipers.
Two things stood out to me about the academic presentation tonight. Number one, I think, one thing that wasn't said was, we have been the beneficiary... Number one, I think, one thing that wasn't said was, we have been the beneficiary, I think, here in North Andover of such a wonderful faculty that we enjoy. They've been so, I think, over the years, so supportive of everything we've tried to do. And I think when you look in other places, other towns, there's a much, often a much more adversarial, or at least contentious, relationship between the faculty and the administration and a bunch of factors. We've never had that problem here, and it's been so beneficial for us. You know, I, the way we've been bargaining recently is just, I think, an example of[1678.63]